Okay, it looks like we've got everybody here. So with that, council, I will go ahead and call our remote meeting to order for the West Richland City Council at 6:00 PM on April 6th. And before we get going, I'm going to ask Stephanie if she will read the virtual meeting ground rules, and then we'll call the meeting to order.
All right, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video and click rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you have joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video. And there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant ID. Please call in with that ID as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a public hearing. And when the mayor calls the hearing to order, if you raise your hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on the participant, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. And written comments on public hearings will be read during the meeting. All right.
Thank you.
Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Yeah.
Gail Brown.
Here.
Rich Buell.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Okay. And we'll give Stephanie just a bit of time to mute everybody and then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Me myself. Got halfway through the pledge muted there. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Counsel, the agenda is before you. We have a couple of changes to our agenda this evening. On the consent agenda items, item six A will be moved to seven E. And item six G will move to seven F. And there is one update to the consent agenda on item six C. The interlocal between the city of West Richland and the city of Richland. There is a whole harmless clause at the end of that interlocal for the signaling. So that is one change that we have been approved by Bronson round our representation and city staff. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried, thank you, counsel. We have a couple of presentations this evening. The first one tonight, we have Peter King of the Washington, excuse me, Association of Washington Cities, AWC, as we all know. And this evening, Peter will be presenting Mayor Pro Tem Brink with the achieved certificate of municipal leadership, which is quite an extensive process to go through. And Peter will elaborate a little bit on that, I imagine, this evening. And with that, Peter, I'd like to turn it over to you, sir. Welcome and thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you, members of council, for a few minutes this evening. I know you have a busy agenda, but nice to be here. I wish that I could be there in person in council chambers with you. I think you're probably getting as tired of Zoom meetings as I am, but some someday we'll get there. I am here to present an advanced certificate of municipal leadership to Mayor Pro Tem Brink. First on the West Richland City Council to achieve this, so congratulations. A little bit of history on the program for those of you who may not be as familiar. Our certificate of municipal leadership program offers all mayors and city council members from all 281 cities and towns, the opportunity to learn more about the essential skills and knowledge to effectively operate within the law, which is the basics. To plan, to secure and manage funds and to foster community and staff relationships. So those are kind of the four core areas. It was first created back in 1997, so it's been around now for almost 25 years. And the basic program requires mayors and council members to to complete 30 credits of study in four core areas. The advanced certificate was added a few years later and it requires an additional 30 credits to be met with either AWC or non-AWC courses plus a community service component. So others or service on other boards and commissions and state level committees can accommodate that additional community service. So over the years, about 1,100 elected officials have completed the basic certificate. And we now have about 350 that have completed the advanced certificate over the 25 years of the program. So, you know, on average, we maybe have a dozen elected officials a year that accomplished the award. And all of you as elected officials are automatically enrolled. Once you take a course or participate in a conference with AWC. And then we track your credits and there's a spot on our website where any one of you can go in at any time and see kind of where you stand and what what courses you've taken. So very easy to to take a look at that. Four core areas are rules, responsibilities and legal requirements, pretty basic. We have one on public sector resource management, so fiscal finance, community planning and development, land use zoning, annexation, strategic planning, and then effective local, local leadership, which includes community outreach. You know, we continue to expand our online education to accommodate busy schedules and reduce travel. That was originally our thought, but the last year, year and a half, certainly with COVID, that accelerated everything that we've been putting on in content that's online. So, you know, last year, our annual conference was online. We will be online again in June. And those of you who attended that, you can earn up to 10 credits by participating in that. And most of our workshops and and our content is now available online. We took a look back last year between March and September. We did 34 different events and it attracted over 3,400 city officials to different topics. So if you have an interest in a specific area, I'm sure that if you go to our website and take a look, you can find that content and participate in that. We had a session with the new Director of Health Department a couple of weeks ago. Had a conversation with our two US senators. So lots of lots of content available to you. So the advanced certificate of leadership really acknowledges the continued commitment to education and community service that council members and mayors take on. So tonight I'm with you to acknowledge and congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Brink for achieving the advanced CML. So on behalf of AWC President Sue Ng Moody, Mayor of TWISP and the AWC Board of Directors, I extend my sincere congratulations to Mayor Pro Tem Brink for your achievement and dedication to continued education on behalf of your community and the citizens of West Richland. So congratulations and thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Peter.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Much appreciated having you this evening. Mayor Pro Tem Brink, would you have a few words for us, please, sir?
Just a few words, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I enjoy serving along with my fellow council members with you, Mr. Mayor, as well as our city staff. But what the advanced certificate has given me the opportunity to do is to work alongside my fellow peers and the leadership of the other communities across the state of Washington. Hopefully it's expanded my awareness of how other cities attack problems and challenges. But it's just been a sincere pleasure to be involved and I look forward to continued involvement. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, welcome and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brink. We're very proud of you. And if there's any more education that you require, I'd be more than happy to sign off on that travel voucher for you when we get back in the air.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that also goes out to all council members. Peter, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for having me.
You're more than welcome to hang out and and watch how efficient a Zoom council meeting can be. Or we let you go ahead and enjoy your dinner and your evening with your significant other.
Well, I might, I might hang around because it's really interesting that probably on one of these, one or two a week. And it's really interesting to see how different council members handle Zoom. So far you're doing great.
Perfect. That's because we have a city clerk, Stephanie Hags, been all, she's been, she's the one that's got us all dialed in here. So we're good to go.
Right.
Thank you. And our second presentation this evening, we have Michael Novakovich, CEO for Visit Tri-Cities is here to present the annual report of visit. So, Michael, thank you for joining us this evening, sir. Always good to see you.
Always good to see you, Mary Gary. Council members, thank you for your time, city staff. And I'm going to, if I can get permissions to share my screen. Oh, it looks like I got it. Awesome, truly efficient. Bear with me here, I'll dial this in. Here we go. All right, so as the mayor mentioned, it's our annual report. Matter of fact, I'll be presenting our annual report, so a state of the tourism industry and our 2021 work plan. You're going to really enjoy that. It's about a 90 minute presentation as we dive into about 150 lines of text. It's going to be good fun for all of you. It's going to be great fun for me because I enjoy hearing myself talk. So let's get right to it because I know you have a packed agenda as we heard earlier. So why does tourism matter? I know you're very, very familiar. What you're looking at is our numbers last year. So the Economic Agency that we work with that does the economic analysis for Washington State or individual counties, Tourism Economics, provides us a new report in May. Their subsidiary of Oxford Economics. So we'll get a new report in May, really understanding what happened this last year. But but pre-COVID, half a billion dollars walks into our community every year in the pockets of visitors. And of course, they spend those dollars staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, taking our attractions, purchasing from our retail, pumping gas, buying groceries, drinking a lot of wine, no doubt distilled spirits and crap beverages too. So big money coming in. That half a billion dollars can help small businesses not only survive but thrive, which is great news. Because if we have a thriving business climate, we can attract new business to our community. So that's more amenities for you and I to enjoy. That visitor economy supports about 5,600 jobs in our community, so pretty significant employer. But all of that economic activity generates a significant amount of tax revenue. It's about 54 million in state and local taxes that come through the tri-cities thanks to our visitors. More great news for you and I is it lowers our individual household tax burden. But those taxes help to pay for things like police and fire and schools and teachers and the maintenance of our roads, the beautifications of our parks and so much more. So when you look at this visitor economy in total, it's helping to build a safe community, an educated community, an employed community and a beautiful community filled with many, many amenities that literally every tri-city and everyone in the region gets to enjoy. Well, that's the good news. This last year, as I know you know, tourism hospitality, one of the first industries to get hit and hit hard adversely impacted. We're crawling out of it. Industry expectations that it's going to be 2024 before we return to 2019 numbers, which was our best year ever, but we're seeing some light, which is exciting. This particular graph here looks at hotel motel taxes. And if you go to the far right under the totals column, second line up from the bottom, you see 2019 just in hotel taxes. So this isn't the full tax picture, but it was about 1.5 million dollars. If you look what happened in 2020, significant downturn in the amount of hotel motel tax collected. Couple of things going on there, as you might imagine, at one point, visitation came to a grinding halt. There was a stay at home, stay safe order. But it wasn't just that we had fewer people in our community, which we definitely did. Our hoteliers' ability to charge the same rates that they'd previously charged was greatly diminished. So there was less taxes generated on the rates that they were able to charge. So it's a pretty significant hit last year. It is interesting though, when you look at our, the revenue side of the house, when you look at our financial picture, over on your left is 2019, over on the right, 2020. 19 was our best year ever, almost 2.7 million dollars in revenue that came through our doors. When you look at 2020, when you consider what happened last year, you would think that our revenues would be down more than they are. I want to call your attention to a couple of pieces there in that 2020 pie chart. Up in the upper left, if a circle had a corner, it would be in the left hand corner. You see county at 13.1%. And then over on there on your right, you see grants and miscellaneous at 4%. That county line there did not exist in 19 and the grants you'll notice were 0.4% in 19. So because of the COVID pandemic, some state initiatives and federal initiatives, we were able to access some grant monies. But that's what the county number is to Benton County. We partnered with them for a COVID mitigation campaign. We had funding through CARES Grant to do that for our entire region. It was built Benton and Franklin Counties. And we had a contract that was up to 435,000. We ended up spending $334,000 of that. So so it really helped offset our expenses, which is great. Big difference though between the the promotion and advertising we were doing with those dollars, which was all about community health and wellness, which is a good thing versus what we typically do. Typically, when we promote, it's outside the region. You don't really see Visit Tri-Cities endeavors. We're working to attract people to our community and we're selling futures. So my group sales team, sports meetings, conventions, they work one to five years into the future. But even on the leisure side of things, when we promote, people are planning, they might see an ad and maybe they decide to come to our region next week. Maybe it's next month or maybe the next year, but whatever it is, it's in the future and that helps to replenish these funds, allowing us to promote. The county dollars, when we were doing COVID mitigation communications, was all about community health and wellness, which really worked for us too. Because when when the opportunity came up, we were creating levers. How are we going to be successful in this space? And we thought, who better to talk to the tri-cities than the contracted marketing agency? So we dove into this thing. Our thoughts were not only if we build a healthy community, is it a good thing? But it'll allow us to get back to the business and drive all of this economic impact. So that partnership's continued. The city of West Richland helped fund a campaign that took place from January to March of this year. And then you're, I want to thank you for reinvesting in this endeavor as we go into this summer. As we're encouraging people to get out, get vaccinated, continue with the W's as we do this and get back to health so we can get back to business. So conventions and sports, this again is group business. I'm not going to go to so much into the detail on the slide, although I'm happy to answer questions. But group business is expected to come back slowly. So when you think of conventions, we're talking about indoor spaces. So these associations that host these types of events, AWC may be one of those. Some of these associations, their ability to host those events was diminished due to the the impacts this last year. Also, there's a big question, what the return on those events will be? As in, can they attract the delegates? And for the businesses that are sending the delegates, are they spending money on business travel? And are they concerned for their employees' safeties? When we also, also when we look at our ability to host the occupancy limits in some of our facilities under our current phased approach, we keep getting higher limitations, which is great, but we're not where we need to be for some organizations to be successful. So there's some barriers there. We're seeing some activity, a renewed interest, which is great, but our expectation is this will come back a little slower. Sports is a different story. Since the beginning of the pandemic, the tournament directors we work with and the athletes were ready to take to the fields. They just needed a provision from Washington State to do so. My team's been working with the governor's office throughout this. We've had some significant wins. We have teams on the fields right now, which is super exciting. There's a lot of emotional health and wellness for our young athletes, but a lot of economic activity as people are staying in our hotels and going out and enjoying the amenities in our community. So it's exciting to see that happen. And of course, we've got to manage all of these things safely. When we talk about leisure travel, it's the return of the road trip. There was a national study that found two and three people were willing to travel up to 300 miles one way for an experience. And they're looking for outdoor experiences, as you might imagine. So outdoor places, outdoor places and magical spaces. And we've got that here, your neighbor there, Red Mountain is one of those magical spaces. But we are well within the swing zone of Seattle, Portland, Spokane and Boise. We're currently marketing in a 250 mile radius, capturing those areas with a significant concentration into the Puget Sound. That's our biggest drive market. When you look at this media outreach, we bring these travel writers into our community and it has big impact. We'll show up in USA Today, CNN Travel, Sunset Magazine, there's a variety of different publications. If you look at that center bullet, we only had two travel writers in town last year. We normally host between 15 and usually it's closer to 20. We're going to make up for that this year. We were awarded the T-Bex Conference. It is the Travel Bloggers Exchange. It only happens in North America once annually and it's the largest gathering of travel writers. So in October of this year, we'll have four to 600 travel writers in our community. And they're going to light up the tri-cities. They'll show up before the conference writing about us. Of course, during the conference, some of them will stick around post-conference. Others will go out to destinations across Washington State. Destinations that had previously hosted this event said they generated five to 20 years with the travel writer content. So a pretty big deal. Of course, we have digital and social media marketing that we engage in, strong followings. We're revamping our website. We'll launch a new website in July, very excited about that. Rich content, a lot of video content, a lot more imagery. People will be able to build trip itineraries and learn a lot more about our communities in compelling ways. Of course, we have tried and true tactics, broadcast media. We do streaming content OTT, it's called. We do some print, but not a whole lot of print. And again, Puget Sound regions are primary market. I mentioned COVID mitigation communications, great success with those campaigns this last year. Several endeavors that through partnerships, I know early on Mayor Gary's involved in a mask up campaign. These are the things that were allowing us to move through phases. The images you're looking at here were part of our CYA, cover your air holes. That got a lot of traction. And then that work plan I told you about that we'd spend a good 90 minutes on. What I figured I'd do is on each individual line, I'll field your questions and then we'll move on to the next one. You want to dig into this thing? Good. Councilmember Buell's with me, we're not going to do that. What I would tell you is we covered a lot of our tried and true tactics. My group sales team, so the sports meetings and conventions normally travel across the US and meet with decision makers. They'll meet with up to 30 decision makers on these trips. To bring business back to the tri-cities, as you might imagine, that's, those exchanges have changed. A lot of it's happening, just like what we're doing right now. But that's provided some new opportunities, which is great. One of the things that we've done and we're rolling out even more this year is it really embraced some digital technologies so we can better sell the tri-cities. So for these tournament directors and meeting planners, we launched a platform called Kula, which has 360 degree tours of our sports infrastructure, hotels and meeting spaces. So real, a great way for us to showcase our community without somebody getting on a plane and coming for a site visit, which we're starting to see some of that activity actually come back around, which is super exciting. We launched another platform about a week ago called SkyNav. It's bird's eye views of the tri-cities region. You'll find waypoints and markers all around town when you click on them. There's different types of content you might find. It might zip you down street level where you can go into a business and we'll be working with area businesses to get 360 degree content of their businesses. So virtual experiences, some of it might launch videos, others might be a photo gallery. So some pretty cool ways for our leisure travelers to tap into the amenities of the region. Of course, anybody we're selling group business to, they can better understand why they'd want to host here. But even on the business recruitment side of things, workforce recruitment, relocation, great tool to showcase the amenities of the tri-cities. We also launched a platform called Band Wango. It's like a virtual city pass. We have a wine pass out there right now. We have more passes we're creating. So a lot of new endeavors, we're super excited about. But in this environment, we were already working our way towards some of these digital tactics pre-COVID. But it lent itself really well to us pushing that further farther forward and we're game ready. So we're, we're very excited about that. And that is your non-90 minute high level look at our year in review and our 2021 work plan. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Perfect, thank you, Michael, much appreciated. And Councilman Bloom, you have your hand up.
Well, it's something I've mentioned before and I don't see it on your work plan, which I did look at. And that is the partnering with Allegiant Air as far as reverse flights from Las Vegas. You know, there's a lot of people discouraging from California not wanting to go back in Las Vegas that are into wine. And it seems a perfect, perfect fit. So I just, you know, I look at the tri-city wine tourism, you know, it's it's often there as coordinated development of wine tourism packages. But I think, you know, partnering with Allegiant would be a very positive move.
Yep. Councilmember Bloom, it's great thought. We're, we're looking at a different route, actually two, one that's undisclosed. But the other one, we have, you might be familiar with it. One of our revenue streams, of course, we have lodging tax and then we have membership, we're a membership based business. But we have what's called TPA Tourism Promotion Assessment. So the visitors that come to our community as of April 1st paid $3 per room night to stay here. And that's typically been about 60% of our funding. When we have a year where we have fewer expenses than we receive in and be a TPA, we have, we go to the cities, Richland, Pasco, Kennewick. They're collecting that TPA assessment, we do reserve requests. We had a significant request this year, we just did this this last month. It's actually to build inbound demand from the new San Diego flight, which I believe is Allegiant. So we're looking at that, one other flight. I'll talk to my marketing team though about the Vegas flight. We went into Minneapolis before the Washington State Wine Commission spent about a year there, kind of laid the foundation for Washington wine. So we followed that up, this is pre-COVID. But but working on that inbound demand, so the strategies, you're, you're spot on. There's really good opportunity there for us.
Thank you, Michael, appreciate that. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to note here, and maybe there's other things behind it. But I would like to note that the city of West Richland is a platinum member while some of our other cities around us are community members. So kudos to West Richland for being team players.
That's right, yep. We appreciate the partnership. A matter of fact, we're looking at doing more with the Red Mountain Event Center. I just saw that here at the end of the month, what do we've got? We've got drive-in movies and we've got a tailgate party for the AM. So these are things we'll be talking about. So expect to see that showing up on our socials and in other ways, but feed us the info, we love it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you, appreciate it. Councilmember Fettow.
Here's Mayor, hey Mike.
There, Councilmember Fettow.
Hey, um, so a couple of months ago or so, I stepped in, I've called and looked for it down for Councilmember Buell. And we talked about Iron Man coming to the tri-cities. I know that's not happening now, but can you maybe give us a little bit of heads up as to maybe why they selected? Was it Ben?
I think it's you.
Yeah. What chances try to say he's got to bring that back in the future?
Yeah, that's a great question, real disappointing. We were so excited about that. We had a lot of community support, the right partners at the table. Iron Man was, was very, very impressed and they weren't just selling us ability goods. They have some significant issues happening down in California with their, with their events down there. And they were needing a regional draw. And so when they were considering us, they were looking at Eugene, tri-cities, and I think it was Whitefish, Montana. They selected Eugene because of the proximity to their, their California events. I'm not sure if they're going to lose those California events or what, what the real bind there is. The other piece they were looking at, there was another community here in Washington. And for the life of me, it's on the west side, it escapes me. They were working to doing a date change to make the tri-cities better fit and it didn't happen. So their comments to us, we're going to keep in their ear, but their comments to us, it'd be 2023 before we came back in this cycle and we, we looked at bringing it here. One of the things that we're looking to do, because we developed a pretty good relationship with Dave Christian, is tapping into some of his networks. So we're looking at some of these other major events. So for instance, could we bring a Red Bull event here of some variety? And so maybe leveraging a part of what he experienced here, because he tells a good story about the community partnership and the assets that we have. And maybe getting a crack, our foot in the door with some of these other folks and maybe bring in another large scale event for the tri-city. So stay tuned on that one, something we're working towards.
Thank you. And Councilmember Buell.
Thank you. Hey, Mike, good evening to you, sir. Well, my fellow council members, I've been the liaison to Visit Tri-Cities for a number of years. It's no, no question, like everyone else, Visit Tri-Cities really had some challenges they had to overcome this year. But I, I wish to extend my personal congratulations to Mike and his team. They've done so many things. They've supported COVID-19 awareness through media campaigns. They've come up with unique virtual marketing programs. We have people paying attention to the tri-cities, even if they weren't able to actually get here the traditional ways. But they certainly were out there, you know, pounding the payment, looking to get interest in our area. They've been planning for the future. They've done basically everything they have and yet through it all, they continue to have that great positive outlook and continue to look toward other things they can do. In fact, Mike and I have a one-on-one meeting that Mike is doing with his board members. This meeting with me is coming up this Friday. So Mike, to you and your team, congratulations on getting through a challenging year like you. We look forward to a return to normalcy, both for the city of West Richland as well as for Visit Tri-Cities. But to you and your team, kudos for a job well done in the challenging year, sir. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Buell, appreciate it. Yes, 46 board members, I'm having some fantastic one. Oh, thank you, Councilmember Beal. Appreciate it. Yes, forty-six board members. I'm having some fantastic one-on-ones.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Beal. And I just echo the same, same sentiment you said in regards to Michael's involvement with this COVID nineteen. He's been an absolute cornerstone in, in messaging. We asked Michael to reach out. He set up a studio in his offices. He's doing voiceovers. I think he's going to start, he's going to throw his hat in the ring of some of these animated movies now. Because he does such a great job. So everything you see out there as far as the messaging is from Michael Lavakavish and his team. And we thank you very much for everything you've done in regards to that and getting us back to whatever that new normal is going to be. So thank you, Michael. Much appreciated.
I just appreciate it, Mayor. I've got a, I'm blessed with an amazing group of talented individuals I get to work with on a daily basis. So teamwork for sure.
Well, it's because you sit at the drum set behind you and rock out a little bit for them. I'm, I'm sure that everybody has quite a good time and dance theme going on in the, in the foyer. Socially distanced, of course.
Of course.
Yes. Michael, thank you again. We appreciate everything you do for our region and look forward to a better year in twenty-one and even better in twenty-two.
Love it. Thank you. I truly appreciate the support.
Bet. Take care. Appreciate it. And council, we also have this evening joining us is, is Mike Creo. Bronson is on spring break with the family. I just got a text from Eric Mendenhall. Eric is on spring break. And his video is not supporting the, the internet's not supporting his video very well. So he will be joining us by way of audio only the rest of this evening. So with that, we have the consent agenda before you, council. Which is approve the minutes, the regular meeting, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the special meeting, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And a special meeting, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and a workshop, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Resolution thirteen twenty-one, interlocal agreement with city of Richland for the signaling program assistance. As, as mentioned, there was that update as a whole harmless agreement at the back of that interlocal, which is pretty much standard language approved by the council, or excuse me, approved by staff and legal counsel. And a motion to authorize a mayor to execute professional services contract with Northwest Groundwater Services LLC for well number two. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute amendment to number, number one to professional services contract with J U B for the SR two twenty-four Record of Survey. And a motion to authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to professional services contract for bio solids removal contract with Natural Selections Farms Incorporated. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended and presented currently by you.
Second.
Motion and a second. Before I ask for any vote on this, may I ask anyone from the audience that they would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? If so, raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. Stephanie, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Okay. We had a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Is six G off the agenda?
Six B is moved.
George.
G.
G.
Yes, it's moved to seven F.
Okay, I, I, I miss, I misheard the G. Okay.
Very good. Thank you. I have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose like sign please. Motion carries you down. Actually, thank you, council. Moving on to ordinances, resolutions, motions of public hearings. Seven A is an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two biennial budget. And I will ask if we would have a staff report by Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Gary. Good evening, council. This is a second budget amendment for the twenty-one, twenty-two biennium. This amendment trues up the beginning fund balance for all funds. When the budget was built in two thousand and twenty, the ending fund balance was based on projected or estimated revenues and expenditures. Finance staff has spent the lap, the first quarter working on closing out two thousand and twenty. And we're able to provide a more precise two thousand and twenty ending fund balance. Or in this case, the beginning two thousand and twenty-one, beginning fund balance. In addition to the turning up of beginning fund balances, this amendment appropriates, appropriates additional funds for continued projects or additional items. For general fund, there was a total of just under one point three six million dollars in carryover funds added to the beginning balance, of which this amendment appropriated about six hundred and sixty-eight thousand as follows. Light items that were reduced in the first budget amendment on January fifth are being replenished. This includes just over a hundred and ninety-five thousand to community development, professional services, and sixty-five thousand to the police department for a vehicle. Early this year, the city received a bill from Department of Retirement Systems for the city clerk who retired in two thousand and twenty. This bill was not anticipated when the twenty-one, twenty-two budget was created. This amendment increases the city clerk personnel benefits budget by approximately twenty-two thousand dollars to cover the invoice. Increases for community development, professional services for legal costs associated with small tracts by fifty thousand, as well as a hundred thousand for contract assistance with excess building inspections due to the high volume of building activity. The city has some aging IT equipment that needs to be replaced. This amendment appropriates fifty thousand for replacement equipment. The city began working on a land swap with the Alexanders in two thousand and twenty. And the project was expected to be completed in two thousand and twenty when the twenty-one, twenty-two budget was created. But due to amendments to the purchase and sale agreement, the sale has been extended into twenty-one. This amendment increases the budget by sixty thousand dollars for those closing costs. This amendment appropriates a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to restore irrigation services at the racetrack property. And also for the general fund, it includes a project update for the Shoreline Master Plan Project. The amendment recognizes two thousand and six dollars in grant revenue to be received in two thousand and twenty-one and appropriated an additional two hundred and forty-nine dollars. The remaining six hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars will increase the ending fund balance to the general fund, which goes from approximately two point three million dollars to three million dollars. The remaining portion of this amendment is turning up capital project line items. Capital projects can span over multiple years and/or budget cycles. Finance staff works in conjunction with public work staff to track total project budgets. This amendment trues up budgets for the following projects. In Fund Three O One, State Route Two Twenty Four, Red Mountain Transportation Improvement Project. And Fund Three Fifteen, the construction of police facility. And Fund Three Fifty Five, Bombing Range Road Bridge Project, Bombing Range Road and Keen Road Intersection Project, as well as the South Thirty-Eighth State Route Two Twenty Four Signal Project. And Fund Four O Four, trues up the Department of Ecology Stormwater Capacity Grant, both revenue and expenditures. Fund Four Four One includes the Well Ten S ASR Project and Lewis and Clark Well Eleven Project. Staff recommends passing the ordinance to modify the twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget as reflected in Exhibit Eight. Passing the amendment would authorize an increase in appropriations in the amount of seven million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. And recognize an increase in resources in the amount of eleven million, sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. Bringing the total revised budget to eighty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Hey, thank you, Aaron. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to comment on the item on the agenda this evening? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Stephanie, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Okay, very good. Council, may I have a motion?
I moved to pass ordinance eleven dash two one, amending the city of West Richland, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two biennial budget. Got the right ordinance number, right?
And I have a motion by Councilmember Moran, second by Mayor Proton Brink. Council, we have any questions, comments? If so, I can direct them to the particular director that might be able to answer those questions or conversations amongst yourselves. I see no one.
I accept question. Am I not? Am I muted? I, I actually have made some comments to Mr. Slate when I, I met with him yesterday. In our last budget, the racetrack was kind of left as to be determined. And we've added a lot more, kind of, I guess, hit the wrong side of the coin on the closing cost. But we also have this irrigation thing, and it still says the ongoing after that. So I did ask Mr. Slate, I, I just, you know, that's kind of just wide open. That hasn't really functioned for twenty years. It could be a pretty big rehab. So I just, I'm not sure what the top of that is, but I don't want to do budget amendments for every other month either. So I'm just to think, and I, and the other thing, I just, we did all this with the police station together. And we land swapped and everything with the police station. And then, and some of this, we're going, the water goes to the police station and to the racetrack. I'm just to make sure, and not that we're not doing that, but just to make a real distinction between the bond money and the race, what we're using on the racetrack.
Yeah, so if I could, I'll ask Roscoe to go ahead and talk.
He answered most of my questions. I just wanted to, you know, I did ask him those things, so.
I think it'd be, I think it'd be a good idea if the Frost go explain to council the explanation of which you received from him. Explain a little bit more about what the intent is with that well out there and how it's going to create an irrigation district to serve multiple properties. And, and how everything's playing in regards to potable water to the police station site and SR two twenty-four. So Roscoe, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I met with Gail yesterday, answering some other questions. We did go over some of the stuff with the raceway, just to make sure it's clear that costs associated with the police station are being accounted for separately than the racetrack stuff. So just to make sure that's clear. In regards to the well, there's an existing well on the racetrack property. It's currently being used by the Alexanders, and that's been used for probably a dozen years. The, when we purchased the property, we acquired a ag lease. The port was leasing the South acreage for farming. The Alexanders had put a pump and well on a VFD in there and have been irrigating. The budget amendment includes a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to go in and look at that well, do some pump testing, transfer some, well, not transfer the water rights, but the city has a number of groundwater rights. I want to do something similar to what we did with our well six, where we basically converted it into an irrigation where we served the Richland School District. Do the same thing with this well. So we're going through a process to add it as additional point of withdrawal. And then look at the electrical service to that well serves multiple things. I need to get it disconnected so it just serves the well. Look at upgrading the pump and motors that it can serve not only the forty-two acres that the Alexanders are currently farming. But I want to form, like the mayor said, an irrigation district similar to the other ones we have in town. So that this well water can be used to irrigate Alexanders, the thirty-five acres of the racetrack proper, the twenty acres that we have behind the racetrack, and then the five acres of the police station. So basically create a little, small irrigation district rather than use our potable water for irrigation. And so that's what it's in there. It, it includes establishing a rate, establishing the district. So quite a bit of work to put that together. With well six, it was just under a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that's where the number came from. I don't have a lot of estimates with this to give you a firm number, and that's what we talked about with Gail. I'm hoping it'll be substantially less, but at this point, I just don't know. So, but that's the goal. The end goal is to convert that into an irrigation well that not only serves what the Alexanders are, but that entire area. So I hope that, that, that answered it. Gail, I.
Oh, you answered mine, yeah. I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of heard that.
The, the big thing was the accounting. So items for the police station, like the waterline extension, were extended for the police station. Those things are being charged to the bond. The other items that we're doing with the racetrack, there's a separate line item. So these costs are separated. So just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay. Thank you, Roscoe. Councilman Blue.
Just to, to clarify, when we first started the racetrack acquisition and Alexander was, was farming the back portion of it. The water rights they were using were some of the water rights that the Kennewick, the port of Kennewick took with them to Kennewick, correct?
They, they were looking at transferring them to the Benton County Fairgrounds at Vista Field. And the latest I've heard, they've been unable to do that.
Okay, so, so this water rights were KID water rights?
The water rights that I'm looking to make this.
That were originally there, were they KID water rights?
No, no, they were groundwater rights.
Oh, okay. That's, that's my, my clarification.
Okay.
So the fourteen thousand acre feet that we have are groundwater rights? That came with the property?
When we, when we acquired the property, it came with eighteen acre feet.
Eighteen acres, okay.
Which, which is sufficient if you have a ninety-two acre developed industrial park with a lot of parking lots and buildings and very little landscaping, but it won't irrigate what, what we've got out there. That'll irrigate about five acres. Yeah, that'll irrigate about five acres.
Yeah, groundwater rights. Yeah, the water rights that were left on the property were based off the master plan by Onaza for the ninety-two acres. So that's how they came up with that number.
So, so the, the site has always been irrigated with groundwater?
That, that is correct.
Okay, that, that's why I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smart.
Uh, yeah, I'm glad that Gail brought this topic up because that was what I was going to ask as well. And, and now that you've gone through it, Roscoe, I just wanted to ask what the what percentage of this irrigation district will be used by the Alexanders? You said it's going to continue to be, be used as their, their irrigation system for that portion of their property?
I, I'm sorry, John.
So are they, is the, are, what portion of this irrigation district will be used by the Alexanders in the future?
So if you do it by acreage, you've got, they'll have about forty-two acres, forty-two point three one. The racetrack proper is thirty-five, the police facility is five, and there's roughly twenty acres behind. So, but what I want to do is look at by use. Because, you know, farming forty-two acres of water use is different than what we'll use five acres. So in that budget amendment, there's money for Katie Isaacson, who we have doing our rate model updates to help us establish those rates. Everybody pays a fair share based on use, not just straight acreage. I think it's going to have to be a little bit of use to make sure everybody pays their fair share for the use of that.
Right. So, so my understanding then is that, okay, so you've answered the question that the Alexanders are, are up for paying for their portion of this irrigation district that you're trying to form. And that's all. Okay. Good enough. Thank you. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, fair, fair cut of the pie. Absolutely. Okay, very good. If I, nothing else. Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign please. Motion carried in Anderson. Thank you, Aaron. Great preparation. Thank you and your staff for all the hard work to get, get over the hump of twenty, night, let's see, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And there again, if you look at the, the carryover and the monetary amount of carryover and what we're able to do. We've got a very, very efficient running finance department. Council's being very, doing their due diligence. doing their due diligence and making sure that everything's kept in line. And and it's nice to have a couple bucks left over at the end of the day so we can fill the gaps where we need to. So well done, both council and Aaron, your staff, as well as everybody else's staff on board here. All right, now we're going to go ahead and move on to seven B and C are public hearing and ordinance regarding the transmission lines. Yeah, inner development regulations, finding of fact. And Eric, are you with this?
I sure am.
Yeah, you got the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, this evening before you is the findings of fact associated with the interim development regulations that you adopted a few weeks ago regarding the transmission lines. Just to refresh everyone's memory on that, the council adopted development regulations for transmission lines to establish a definition for transmission lines. And then to also require transmission lines to attain a conditional use permit within the city. This allows for more public process and it also establishes some development standards for these transmission lines. The the need for that was the information I had been receiving from other entities that BPA was looking to expand their transmission line facilities through West Richland. And without this interim development regulation, there would be no public process or very little public process. So the findings of fact here establish a public process and identify the need for that. And then the that also identifies the need to establish development standards and definitions for transmission lines. So this is a part of the interim development regulation process where after you pass them, you need to adopt findings of fact, and that is what's before you this evening. And staff would recommend the council go ahead and approve these findings of fact this evening.
Good. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. With that, I'll open the public hearing at six fifty four. If you'd like to provide comments, please raise your virtual hand or press star nine on your phone. We'll recognize you. Clerk will unmute you and you could address make comments. Stephanie, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at six fifty four. And ordinance twelve twenty one, inner development regulations, finding of facts, transmission lines. Do I have a motion, counsel?
I move to adopt ordinance twelve twenty one, adopting the findings of facts to support interim development regulations for transmission line use and amend the West Richardson Municipal Code.
A motion and a second. Counsel, any questions of Eric? Discussion amongst yourselves. Seeing no one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose like sign, please. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Much appreciated. Moving on to seventy is a motion setting the two thousand twenty one comprehensive plan docket. And again, Eric, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, the resolution before you this evening is for setting the docket for the comprehensive plan for twenty twenty one. I'm going to go through the proposals. There are six proposals, three map, or sorry, five map amendments and some text amendments. The first one is proposed by Teague's LLC. They have two. This is their first of two. And this is to clean up a rezone that was approved a couple of years ago that addresses some high density residential's comp plan designation. And their their request is to downgrade that zone to medium density residential to comply with their plan development and their approved plat that they have for the site. And the map for that, so you can see where that's located is is on page sixty seven of the PDF. And so that's just a little sliver there. Counsel, you approved that all of the stuffing grade of the north to be zoned commercial. So this just addresses a portion of the zoning to the south to align it with the neighboring zoning to the south. The next one is the Wood Bush map amendment. And this one is requested for approximately ten feet along the commercial portion of the property. And that is to allow for a more buildable area on the current zoned commercial land. And this ten feet would be the landscape buffer that's required to address any future commercial development in that area. The next, and that's on page sixty nine, you can see the approximate location of that. It's not the full yellow area. It's just the ten feet there on the south side of it. The next one is the second Frank Teague's LLC map amendment. This is eight hundred and thirty three acre plan development to start this year in the comprehensive planning for this. We are anticipating bringing back an amendment to this docket later on that would remove this item and push it into next year and continue it into next year as there are significant studies and analysis that is required for this one. And you can see the map for that is on page seventy one of your packet. Again, that's a very large area, eight hundred and thirty three acres. And we've got a lot of studying and analysis that's being done for that. The next map amendment is the Markel, Greg Markel map amendment. And this one, the map is located on page seventy three. This one is to change the zoning and comp planning from high intensity commercial to medium density residential. The rezone request is for RM six. And this is to just address current development demands and the lack of trips next to that commercial property really don't make it a viable commercial piece. So the request is to have it zoned RM six. And you can see that one is on page seventy three. And then the last map amendment is seven HA Family LLC. Because of the parcels not laying out right, this is split zoned on the parcel. I use their map illustration. So there's not a big yellow blob there that shows you where the location is, but there are some circles and some outline of the properties. But really what this one is, is just swapping the multifamily zoning for and the medium densities are ten zoning and just doing an exact swap acre for acre at those locations. And a lot of that's due to topography. And then also just proximity to community services for multifamily and trying to more centralize the multifamily. Text amendments that are being proposed are proposed by staff, and this is to address gridded streets in our comprehensive plan to address the twenty twenty one parks plan update that we're anticipating having approved by the end of this year. And then also just to review and update some of our comp plan to work with the master plan development that's being proposed. So staff would like to present this as the twenty twenty one comprehensive plan docket. Again, you're not approving anything to be finalized. At this point, this is just to open up the discussion, allow staff to move forward with continued review and analysis of these different amendments and take them through the public process.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. If there's anyone from the audience who'd like to comment on this agenda item this evening, please raise your hand or star nine. If you're by phone, be recognized, make comment. Stephanie, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Nor do I. May I have a motion from council, please?
I move to approve before we approve forwarding the comprehensive proposed amendment of the twenty one twenty twenty one docket to the planning mission for review and processing together with the associated area wide rezone.
I second.
I have a motion and a second by councilmember Moran. And the councilmember Moran, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'm wondering on page seventy one, the Frank Teague's LLC, I think it's the second one for Teague's.
Yes.
I'm wondering, so what is the percentage that's changing? Because it's, I see that it's going from high intensity commercial, low intensity commercial and all of the, it looks like it's staying the same according to the current land use designation to requested land use. What is actually changing?
To be determined. So what they've proposed at their initial proposal was for a lot of single family residential. And I've gone back to them already and had conversations and that's been modified significantly. And I think it will continue to be modified as we continue conversations and analysis to see really what the need is for that area and the plan and the vision is for that area. So I think that will be determined as we move along.
Good. I I would hate to think that we're just going to be changing all of these huge chunks to single family. I don't think that's the direction we want to go with our comprehensive plan. I'm also wondering, in general, of the swaps that they're wanting, that this is looking towards, are we losing a percentage of high density? And replacing that with media, what is the the loss and the gain percentage wise, or at least maybe area wise? If you're familiar, or not familiar, if you're aware.
For high intensity is residential?
Yes, yes, sorry, high intensity resident, uh, high density residential, yes.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, you're right. That's a good question. I think right now, the one request to just true up zoning for what's around it would be where you're losing some. But you may be gaining it to the north under their other master plan. I really don't know what that will bring and what that will do. So you may be gaining it there. We may be having a significant increase. But I don't know yet. That there's a lot to be seen. We're having some really good conversations as far as what that planning might be. And I density residential is definitely one of the things that's being increased as part of the proposal.
Good. And then for the Greg Markel that's behind where the yolks is, that one was, they're wanting to change it to the medium density residential from high intensity commercial. Did they mention why it was going to be medium rather than high density residential?
I believe they tried to do high density residential in the past and wasn't very successful in their request. So they're looking at doing the medium density RM six. That gives them six thousand square foot lots.
Right. Okay, I just wasn't sure since it's right next to the high intensity commercial. So, okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much. I I like that you're on top of all of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel of the blue?
Yeah, I I just wanted to clarify that the 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 Tigs property that we're talking about, that that isn't property that we have already gotten preliminary plats on, correct? But we haven't planted any of that.
Which one?
The 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 large one off Rupert.
Yeah, there aren't any plats in. They can't, they they can't plot it. No, there's not. There's certain, certain services they need still.
Okay, and and then if if memory serves me right, we just, you know, prior to your coming, we just changed that high intensity commercial of the medium density residential and commercials of that property, the Martel property behind the yolks, it's gone back and forth a couple of times. I still don't hold for that there. Anyway. But that 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 was only my clarification on the the one off of Rupert.
Thank you. All right, seeing nothing else, council, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose like sign, please. Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Move on to seventy. And with seventy, that is an ordinance ten twenty one amendment to West Richmond Municipal Code nine forty and nine forty four possession of marijuana and drug. With that, we have both Chief Majetic will present staff report. Chief worked with Mike Creo as our prosecuting attorney for these types of cases. You can ask any questions you might of the chief or Mike in regards to this. Chief Majetic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentle counsel and the audience. Tonight, we'll bring before you some suggested amendments to several municipal codes we have on the books. As council is aware, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, this year, the Washington State Supreme Court held in the case of State versus Blake that the statute that criminalized possession of a controlled substance without a prescription exceeded the state's police power and violates due process clauses of the state and federal constitutions. The Supreme Court in State versus Blake ruled that someone must have knowledge of possession of a controlled substance. That specific language was not in the RCW, therefore found unconstitutional. This has therefore decriminalized all simple possession, drug possessions in the state of Washington. In order for the West Richmond Police Department to to commit, to to continue enforcement of possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia and enforcement of alcohol possession by minors, some changes to the West Richmond Municipal Code, chapters nine forty, which governs possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia and nine forty four, which governs alcoholic beverages, are required to add some knowledge element to the crimes. There are also some minor changes to clean up the language in the code and from past changes that have been made and to the laws since that time. There are also proposed some changes of these in the bad ordinance. Staff does recommend that council approves the amendments to municipal code, West Richmond Municipal Code nine forty, which governs the possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia and amendments to West Richmond Municipal Code nine point four four, which governs alcoholic beverages. And Mr. Mayor, that's for my staff report, but I'd like to remind council that we also have Mike Creo here available to answer any questions along the lines of this subject or anything related to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. If there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this agenda item this evening, please raise your hand or star nine on your phone. You'll be recognized. Stephanie, do you see anyone?
I do not.
And nor do I. Counsel, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve ordinance ten twenty one, amending the West Richmond Municipal Code nine point forty possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia and West Richmond Municipal Code nine point forty four alcoholic drugs.
Have motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Okay, counsel, thank you. Counselmember Moran, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I thought it was unmuted. I want to thank chief first for talking to me. I know that we're both talkers. So thank you for taking time out of your day to talk to me and for answering my questions. And I was wondering, on the second page of the ordinance near the top, I know that we had removed a section and I just wanted to make sure the items in the brackets directly behind that, is all of that associated with the items that are not lined out?
There's two things in it all. Okay, can you clarify two things? Exactly what's what are you looking at? Could you give me a page number?
Oh, sorry.
The question?
Yes, in the packet, it is page number twenty three of seventy seven. It's the second page of the ordinance itself. And it's just at the top where we have the lined out section that says, except as provided by RCW, blah, blah, blah. That is lined out. And then there is in brackets behind it, the ordinance associated. And I'm just wondering, is there anything in there that has to be lined out as well to go with the section that was lined out?
No.
Okay.
The, the, we're only referring to the state RCW, that's no longer applicable, so that, that's the only thing that was lined out. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct, the, the other piece that she's talking about in the bracket shows the amendment history from its first passage all the way through, is it's been amended. So we don't need to, uh, line those out because we want to keep track of when those amendments were made. For example, if, and, and it doesn't work quite in the marijuana realm because of I five oh two and what happened when five oh two passed, but let's say someone had a, an MIP from when they were eighteen, and they've had a warrant out for their arrest since they were eighteen and now they're forty-five. All right, they come back, um, you know, I'll just state, we probably wouldn't prosecute that very hard.
Like.
You know, if you can stay out of trouble all along, but I'm trying to give you an example. It helps the prosecution go back and figure out what, which ordinance was in effect at the time that the crime was committed, and that's why we keep track of that, those amendments over time.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And then the other thing that I had spoken with you with chief earlier is under the nine point four four point zero seven zero, where it's just got the his, and then we added or her. I was just wondering why, uh, we wouldn't just change it to their, especially since with the state now, we have, uh, gender X available. It would be easier just to change it to their, one word to replace three words, just kind of makes sense to me, you'd mentioned something about the legality behind it, um. So I was wondering about that. Mr. Rio?
I, I can, I can certainly do my best to address that, I think, their, because their T H E I R is a possessive. Um, and, and that's, that's the issue, I guess I would have is trying to explain that in, in a criminal complaint. Um, I would rather, if, if we're going to do that, use, use gender X as you put it, and add that as well, so that I can then use that piece if I need to in it, but to then use there, it's going to become difficult in the art of drafting criminal complaints, if that makes sense.
Well, there is possession, possessive similar to his or her, so it would just be, uh, years by their parent or guardian for beverage, and then administered to them by their physician or dentist. It honestly kind of flows a little bit easier because, uh, I know that some people aren't still used to using the third person singular, but it really does flow much better using they and them and their.
What, what if, what if we used the person instead?
I mean, if we want to use two words instead of one, I suppose that.
Well, I, I, so legally, we use a lot of a person and then the person when we write. And so I, I think for me, that would be easier, I, I'm not trying to, to say we shouldn't make that change at all.
Sure.
Um, I, I think going back and, and just changing it to the person and, you know, because we start out with uh, a person under the age of twenty-one, and so then if we refer to the person every time, I think that would be uh, probably a little, little better than, um, than there, I just think people are, may get confused. Um, and, and maybe I'm wrong about that, but, um.
No, I see what you're saying.
Mike, Mr., yeah, can I, can I clarify a little bit, and Mike, you can help me out with this. Uh, when, uh, Kate and I had spoken earlier, I'd mentioned the, uh, legal, not legality, of the legal language that's been traditionally used up to this point. Um, and I don't think that the gender identification has really been an issue at this stage, uh, whenever we, uh, make this type of, uh, adjustments or municipal codes or law. Um, and really, uh, legally, I, I, I just don't, uh, legal language, I just haven't seen it as the norm or even accepted yet. And I'd hate to make those changes until there hasn't been some precedent set, um, to start changing the person or there or anything else, he or she, so far up to this point, has been the accepted language for this type of, uh, amendment or municipal codes or laws. And I, I just hate to say any precedence until it's been established, um, that's a requirement. So I, I, I personally don't agree that we should make the change from a he or she.
So, from, from my point, I don't get into policy decisions, I'm trying to give you the legal aspect of it, and then let the council make the, the policy decision behind it. Um, up to this point, I think the chief is correct in that I have not seen the, the, uh, gender pronouns change in the RCWs, et cetera, I'm sure that's coming. Um, and what I think, eh, wh- where I agree with the chief is that it'd be nice to see what the legislature does and then adopt what they do. Um, and up to this point, I haven't seen that change be made, uh, so, so that would be my recommendation is, i- if we we can adopt what we've got here, or you could go add the person, which I think accomplishes the same thing, but uh, at this point, we need to get this adopted and quickly, because it's, it's something that's affecting the ability to uh, prosecute crimes, especially, uh, right now with kids. Kids are unable, are able to, uh, have heroin, but not a vape pen. Um, and so I, I think we need to get this passed a- as quickly and as expeditiously as we can.
So what, uh, what my recommendation is going to be to council is to follow the, the legal advice from, uh, our council, uh, Mike Creo, and tell this is a, a legislative item that comes through to, uh, uh, state RCW, I would suggest that we stay tight with the standard provision language used in legal uh, documents such as this at this point.
I, not to pardon.
Well, just, just to clarify, these are, these are adjective positions, so if we went to the person, it would be the persons.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, that's why the them and there would work, but I have problems as long as it's the persons resident, you know. Okay, thank you.
Kate, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Kate, go ahead.
That's fine, I, I, I just wanted to make sure, so, w- was it your advice in particular to leave it with his and her? Or was it just, it would also be acceptable, Mr. Rio?
So, I, I think if we went to the person, the, the problem with there is.
Oh, I'm fine with the persons.
So the, the person, i- if, if we made that change, I, I think that i- they would have a difficult time arguing that it was somehow defective, I think, um, in, in that if we start using there and, and we, we change what we've done, that, and I, again, I haven't had the ability to take the time, replace all the words with there and make a legal determination of how that plays out. Um, so that's why I said, well, if we just, we've talked about a person and then we're referring to that person as him or her.
Right, and.
And, and so if we just switched it to the persons, et cetera, that, that I think would be sufficient. Again, I'm doing this on the fly, I haven't had the chance to, to replace all those things, which I normally would do, and then, you know, sit back and say, all right, how do I, how do I think this works? Um, but I, I am comfortable with the idea of the person or persons, um, because I use that language more often than there.
Okay.
When, when I, when I draft a legal document, there can reflect to all kinds of different, um, situations or people, and so I, I want to be as specific as possible, and that's why I'm, I'm choosing the person or person over there, um.
Mr. Rio, if I, if I, if I might ask you, Mr. Rio, is, is any, any language change to what you have now going to make any difference in, in you prosecuting a case? Is there any, is there any difference or outcome?
Not between the person or persons and him or her, no, I don't see any difference now. And like I said, I, I'd like to be in compliance with what the state has set, and they're usually pretty progressive on making these changes, and I'd assume it would come pretty quick, you know, in the near future.
Uh, you've, you've heard my recommendation of what council, or our council, Rio, has, has, has given us, so I will recognize, uh, Mayor Proton, break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also agree with your recommendation, having served as the affiant in numerous documents during my career with the FBI, I'm going to rely on the judgment of our legal professional, Councilor Rio, and let's, let's, uh, move on with the way it's written.
Thank you, Councilman Smart.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think that as I read the entire sentences, um, although I heard what councilman or council, Council Rio, is that how we, uh, mentioned that the per- persons would work? But when you read this, it says, um, the first sentence, except in the case of liquor given or permitted to be given to a person under the age of twenty-one years by the person's parents. See, at that point, I, I have to wonder, which person are we talking about now? It makes a lot more sense to me to say his or her, or whatever the state legislature decides we're calling people next year. But I agree that this should be kept as his or her, it's far more clear, distinct, and, and absolute, um, as it's written, and I would like to just, um, wait until we get any official guidance from our, from the state before we're making changes to this type of language. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else? Kate, is your hand still up, or is it coming down?
I have. I would like to have us use the person or the persons, I don't think that there's any reason for us to wait until we are forced to make a change. There's no reason why we can't be the first ones to do something, especially since, as Mr. Rio has stated it, it wouldn't be anything different legally. I just, I feel like we can get ahead of the game and actually be forward thinking in this, but if we want to stick with the tried and true past of what's been done, rather than look towards the future, I'm fine with that as well.
We will, we will let the vote take that, and so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you, council. Moving on to seven F. Seven F is a deed restriction to Flat Top Park, and Eric, are you still with us this evening?
I sure am, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you, is a motion to, um, allow the mayor to record indeed, um, Flat Top Park uh, for restricting uses to recreational, uh, uses and facilities, municipal well and associated facilities, public transportation uses, such as the, uh, transit bus station and park and ride facility, uh, veterans memorial, concerts, festivals, community center, swimming pools, splash parks, concessions, city permitted vendors and other recreational activities. Um, the, the genesis of this deed restriction, if you, if you, if you may recall, in the past, there was, uh, some citizens that had some concerns with, uh, the city selling some of the property there for brick and mortar type commercial uses. And so the deed restriction is a belt and suspenders approach to restrict these uses to effectively the uses that we have there at the site now, and future potential park uses such as a swimming pool, splash park, community center. This does not give any outright permission for these uses, they still need to have council approval as the city still owns this property and, and is planning on continuing to own this property in perpetuity. Therefore, any future development on this piece would be required to have funding approved by council, be identified in the parks and, uh, recreation plan, and go through proper public process that any of, any parks and recreation, uh, development would need. Um, this development, or this, uh, deed restriction was taken to the Parks and Recreation Board, which voted unanimously. It was fact, actually the fastest meeting I've ever had with the Parks and Rec Board, uh, they were in such favor of this. Um, and they are recommending to, that council move forward and have this, uh, deed restriction placed on the, on Flat Top Park, and staff would recommend, uh, council to go ahead and approve this motion, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone from the audience who'd like to comment on this agenda item this evening? Please raise your hand or star nine.
I've, uh, written a comment.
I was going to get to that after, I have no public comment, if we do not. Do you see anyone?
I do not.
Stephanie, I believe you have a written comment submitted by citizen this evening?
Yes.
Would you please read that into the record?
Yes, um, so Ms. Peggy Penisco, um, submitted a written comment, uh, says, council members, please do not approve the requested deed restriction for Flat Top Park. City established deed restrictions should not exist for any of our parks, nor should they be needed. Simply prohibit commercial uses in all city parks by amending existing ordinances, resolutions, and/or policies or approve new ones. Our park plan covers park plans, usage policies, and reservations. This section should be amended to exclude commercial uses in all city parks. The section in the park plan covering leasing of our park should also be amended to exclude all commercial uses. Not attaching city deeds to our parks will benefit staff, mayors, council members, boards, commissions, and residents. From one administration to the next, year after year, there would never be a chance for violation or litigation of a city established deed restriction of a park, if there was none to begin with. We have existing restricted lands within our city, for example, in the bombing range sports complex, restrictions can be hard to remember. Oh, for example, in the bombing range sports complex, restrictions can be hard to remember year after year. An example of a forgotten restriction occurred in recent years in the sports complex regarding a cell tower. A newly hired director was unaware of the restriction, so the cell tower was approved and then had to be retracted. Please don't add Flat Top Park or any other parkland to the list of our existing protected lands, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, appreciate it, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign and record the proposed deed restriction for Flat Top Park as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, uh, council questions of staff or conversation amongst yourself, I see Councilman Blue with your hand up, sir?
Yeah, um, I guess the two, two questions come to mind. One was, we put the deed restriction in, but future councils can remove it, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
A super majority vote.
Right, and, and I, I guess I understand a little bit of resistance that might, that might have, but then if you have the wrong mix of council, you get the wrong answers. Um, the other question, I looked at the deed restriction, and we allow people to have weddings in the park, and I'm trying to figure out if a wedding falls under a recreational event.
Um.
There's festivals, I would say it falls under a festival.
Festival, uh, that's, I mean.
Wedding festival or recreational use?
Well, that's, that's why I was getting, you know, are we, are we really thinking this through, it, it, it doesn't. Uh. I, I'm, I'm a little skeptical about putting the list of activities per se. But uh, because, you know, for, for one aspect, uh, it was thought that possibly the plans that might put in, uh, or subsidize, or we put in charging stations at the park and ride. Um, and that might be restricted under these words. Um, I'm just a little, a little skeptical about going with this deed restriction and having to to refile and, and that, and I somewhat agree with Peggy that, that it isn't necessary. Um, because the previous administration's plan would have had to be approved by council, the same majority. That would lift the deed restriction, so there's my thoughts.
Hey, thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Moran.
Thank you, I am in agreement, I, I'm curious, uh, Eric, what your response is to what Ms. Penisco has said?
How do you mean?
Well, uh, the concerns that she has, would you say that they are well founded? Or would you say that, and if, if you don't want to answer, please feel free not to answer, um, I know it's kind of a Or would you say that, and if, if you don't want to answer, please feel free not to answer. Um I know it's kind of a. Last-minute question, I understand. I just, I I I hear her concerns and I'm wondering. While on the one hand, I I appreciate the work that you put in this. Um and I hate to see work go and then not be approved. But I'm curious. The only thing that would be stopping commercial from going on to it is. The next council, whatever makeup it may have. Getting rid of the deed restriction, correct?
Correct.
So it might be easier instead of doing a deed restriction, just to go into. The zoning itself and make it so that all of the parks are similar. Right?
Well, the park, the parks are already zoned for park use. It's not zoned commercially, it's not zoned residentially, so it has a park's zoning designation already.
Okay, so then I'm.
This is a belt and suspenders approach to address concerns that citizens had. To just let them know that our intent is to keep Flat Top Park as a park in perpetuity. And what we did is we grabbed all of the existing uses that we have at the park and listed those out. Um and then also some that may be contemplated, not necessarily that they would be built such as a community center or a swimming pool or splash park. But uh we wanted to make sure that we were addressing some of those things and making sure that they could be. Uh continued and. Used as, as it is today.
Okay, well, then I, I think that I am actually going to have to agree with Ms. Penesco and. I think that I would first obviously like to say I, I don't want to see commercial built on any of our parklands. I think it's important to maintain the parks as parks. And I appreciate the work that has gone into this. I just, I I'm not a fan of belt and suspenders fixes. But I would like to make sure that the citizens are aware that we do hear the concerns. That we do understand that there is concerns. We don't want, well, at least I don't. I'm sure that others might have different opinions, but. I'm not sure this is the right change, but I appreciate the thought that was put into this.
Just, just to give you a little history, Kate, the background history. Uh a- administration prior to ours had a redevelopment plan of the Van Geesen Corridor. And it showed an awful lot of development of the commercial area in that particular intersection. And it brought forth a lot of concern of our citizens.
Right.
Uh there was a, a rezone that was done, and and I don't believe that, that at that time. Council got the, the whole Paul Harvey of the story in regards to that process. Uh I made a very gallant effort to, to be transparent and forthright of our citizens and address their concerns. And this is more or less, uh from the staff side of it, a follow-up from. Uh that debacle with the redevelopment, the rezoning, the Griggs uh. Uh deal, the, the, the whole thing, and uh thought that this might, you know, we, we made a commitment to. Uh protect our parks, and, and this was something that had been talked about with citizens early on. And thought that this might be a satisfactory way to make sure that they, they felt that this was going to be preserved for an indefinite period. Without a majority vote or, 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 or citizen vote by way of a ballot. But if staff or if council chooses not to go, I mean, that's fine too. But we were just trying to make sure that we did our due diligence, as we had discussed in the past with our citizens and. And this was the last piece of the cleanup of that whole area down there. Uh so one way or another, it's fine by staff. It's not that big a deal. Whatever, whatever council prefers to do is. Is the direction that we will go. I just wanted to give you a history because it was before your time.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I paid attention during the election cycles. I got to see all of the fancy pictures that were brought up during that cycle, so. I do recall that. They were pretty.
Yeah.
Maybe not what I like to see, but they were pretty.
All right, very good. We'll go ahead and roll on to Councilman Smart.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh council. Um I had sent a small packet of, of text. That I thought might have been shared to the whole council, included a letter to council dated April third. Um but if that can't be shown on the screen, I'll just read that and I'll just preface it by saying that I. I think um that what Kate and Richard have said and what um Ms. Penesco have, have said. Um in her letter, um I, I, I agree with. There's a little bit of. I, I like the sentiment and definitely agree with keeping Flat Top Park a part. Um I helped uh fight that battle back in the day. But this particular wording on this deed restriction and the whole idea of the deed restriction, I don't think it's necessarily the way to go. So let me, let me just read this in case people can't see it well. Says the stated purpose of the Flat Top Park deed restriction sounds like it is in keeping with the wishes of the residents. However, the text of the proposed deed lists restrictions, I put that in quotes. That actually seem to grant more uses and potential development, which is completely counter to the stated purpose. Uh granting this set of deed restrictions as written impedes council's power to restrict such developments on Flat Top Park property. Now, I know that we own the property and the council can decide what to do with it and what not to do with it. But this takes a step, I'll just interject here, toward some activities that I don't think we really want to see happen. So I, I go on to say that it. That this actually provides the first step to using Flat Top Park grounds for the development of a community center. That community center may be a fine thing to do, but the people that I heard when they were talking about Flat Top Park in the past and currently. Really don't want to change its character. A swim park, that'd be a fine thing too for somebody to do, but. Again, not necessarily a flat top park. A bus station, I'm particularly concerned about this wording. Because a bus station that you'll see in the next couple of slides can be something that's really. I mean, you might as well put commercial development on the corner. Concession facilities. You know, we think of concession facilities as, you know, Boy Scouts selling hot dogs outside the gazebo. But that can also include permanent facilities that um may have several booths and, and grow into something much larger. Um a, a concert pavilion. We, we kind of have that now, but not really. That could also become a huge development, which. I just don't see the need to put that kind of language in a deed. Um when we could just have a, a, a well-developed park plan and a park. Uh a pro- property um. Use ordinance. So I will skip through this. You probably already read the rest of it. Um I just will say that this attempt to add potential uses to Flat Top Park does not agree with a strong public sentiment to preserve the park. And to maintain its current nature, which has so well served the citizens of West Richland. To achieve the stated purpose of this proposal, significant tax revision would be required. So let's just flash through, Stephanie, if you could, um for the next slide. This is, let's go back to this. I want to read these comments to the right. So you've all read the actual deed, and I've got some questions here. So a super majority currently is able to approve non-part uses of the Flat Top Park property. Is that true? And the answer is, I believe, yes. So I thought this restriction in, in, is inherent to the property type and the funds used to acquire it. That's another thing that's interesting is that, you know, we can't use that for, for commercial purposes. Because I believe it was acquired with um funds that were designated for. Park use, and I think that, that, that may, that's a question on my mind, but I think I remember hearing. That those are inherent restrictions to using park property. Uh even if we tried to rezone it commercial, I think would be a difficult thing to do considering how it was acquired. This, I just have a note of course. I just didn't like the sentence structures. We can ignore that one. Um what is the current city definition of a park and why is this different? And I would add, why wouldn't we put this kind of restriction on every park? And the answer is, we don't need to. We should have a park plan and a strong ordinance that tells us what parks are to be used for. Um associated facilities is too broad of a description. You know, when you talk about municipal wells. There can be all kinds of facilities associated with a municipal well. We may not have a lot of them right now, but in the future, there certainly could be. Um public transportation uses is also too broad. It could include many applications that counter the wishes of the residents. Um a bus station can be large and they're not appropriate use for this park land. And then approving concerts and festivals should not be a part of the park property deed, but rather a case-by-case, year-by-year resolution. By the council. And concessions again can be broadly interpreted and can include permanent facilities. And therefore should not be given a blanket approval by a property deed. So now we can flip through the slides. It's good, Stephanie. I just wanted to show council, these are bus stations. Um you can just flip through these. Uh that's a nice building. I like that, but by the way, I, I don't want it developed on our parkland, okay? So I'm not saying these aren't nice bus stations. Here's a Union Station. Okay, keep going. And then this is also a beautiful structure. I'd love to have this in West Richland somewhere, but not on Flat Top Park property. Displacing the current way that citizens are using it. Is that all we have? Oh, one more. Spokane, boy, that thing's ugly. And then this is just a, a, a transfer station, which is kind of what we have now, but just to note that, that our current. Bus park and ride transfer station with more development could become a rather invasive activity. For our park use, so I think this whole deed proposal brings up a concept that we should be keeping in mind about. Preserving the nature of Flat Top Park and not turning it into this. Um so that's what I had. So I think that we should just table this, maybe talk about it more, and maybe I like Mr. Bloom's suggestion. And, and, and the others on this class go about going through and looking at how we define our parks. And their usage and making sure that we have a um, a really um. An appropriate set of language in our ordinances and our plans. So that, so that we don't have to put deed restrictions on property. That, that sounds messy to me and restrictive and. And cumbersome, so thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Uh Gail?
Um I, on this one, I have to agree with Peggy. Um it, it doesn't make sense to me and um. Really, Ms. Penasco ha- she has a lot of history with these parks, and I, I face no clue what she's probably talking about.
Okay. Thank you. David?
Yeah, to uh to Councilman Bloom's point, um I'd rather see if we stay this direction, which doesn't sound like that most councils are favor of. But I'd rather see a list of things not allowed versus a generic list of things that we might be able to put in there. Um I'd rather see specifically what's not allowed in there. If we stay this route.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Uh Mayor Pro Tem, break?
Uh just a couple of questions. Um Mr. Mendenhall. Um do we uh memorialize deed restrictions on the other parks? Are there memorialized restrictions? Or is this the first one?
And uh.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll save you, Eric. I couldn't.
I'm gonna use my green card and say, sorry, I'm so pretty drained here. I don't, I don't have the history that Rosco might have, but.
Yeah, there is quite a few on different parcels in, in West Richland, so the Yellowstone Trail. Uh park actually has a deed restriction on that from Department Ecology. Uh for a storm drainage facility, we actually had to get permission from Ecology to put the community garden and park above it. Um the Gateway Project was RCO-funded, and so that actually has a deed restriction on it. On that, um I think Ms. Penisco talked about. Uh the sports complex. Uh there were some uh property with RCO grants, so anytime you got a state grant. Especially through RCO, they require you to put these deed restrictions on the property. Um and so there's a number of them that we have now. Um but I gotta say, the early records in the city aren't, uh weren't that well. But after what happened with the cell tower, uh I don't think we approved it, but it got awful darn close down the, the, the path with the sports complex. That it should have been caught earlier uh with a title report, so. But there are a few, and we do track them a lot better than we've done in the past, so. Um and like the mayor said, this, thi- this was a remnant that we had been sitting there dealing with the Austin Drive and that corner lot and the zoning. Um it was actually drafted by me several years ago uh as a part of a settlement possibility. Uh with that lawsuit that involved Griggs and the city. Um and so again, it just pulled it up and said, is this something the council wanted to do? And it, I, I think from everybody's comments, it, I think we can do it different ways and still meet the, the same deal, so it was good discussion, though.
Okay, yeah, uh thank you, Rosco. I appreciate that. I mean, uh like everyone else on council, I want to ensure that parkland remains. Open land for public use. And uh having listened to what my fellow council members say. Uh is this action really necessary in order to ensure Flat Top Park stays uh in its current state? Um I don't believe it is either, and I'd like to follow Mr. Fettow's suggestion. That rather uh we come up with activities or actions which are not allowed and provide some broader guidance in that. Direction, so yeah, I, I don't really support moving forward on this, and I'm, I'm glad it's not very lengthy, so hopefully too much time wasn't spent on it.
Now, Rosco did all the homework a couple of years ago. It just, he just found it under his pile at desk that he had there. Now that he's got some engineers that can get to the bottom of it. Thank you, uh Mayor Pro Tem.
Different approach, Mr. Mayor, on tackling what we do with the parks.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilman Buell?
Yeah, real quickly, I just want to uh find out, clarify for me, can you tell me what is the motion that's on the table? Is it to approve or deny?
Uh move to, move to authorize the mayor to sign or record proposed deed restriction of Flat Top Park.
Okay, so the, the motion is in favor of this deed restriction. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you, and uh Councilman Blue?
Uh one real quick, uh hang on to remember. Um I'll put my Ben Franklin Transit hat on. Uh there was. Back, way back when, before my time, um Mr. Buell and. And company, uh you guys approved the paving of that parking lot. And there was an MOU with Ben Franklin Transit relative to it being a transit facility. I know that was one of the burrs that kept, you know, the previous development. They were worried about that and having to, to provide that, so there is, there are some other. Contin- you know, aspects of the property that we uh, we bought into in the past. But I just wanted to bring that up, that uh. You know, there was, there was a price to have it paid.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I might remind council that Eric's working a- as soon as we get out of our COVID to a parks plan. Uh and that might be the, the opportune time for him to take a look at it, incorporate some of the discussion that was here this evening. Uh and, and as opposed to making any ash rash decisions or bringing back language changes. Or add restrictions or take restrictions away. Let, let, maybe I would suggest, uh if the vote goes the way that I feel it will be. Uh we'll just let this be and, and turn it over to Eric and his staff to uh work through the park plan and see where we come up with that, so. Uh with that, I think I'm just gonna go ahead and ask for the vote right now. If there's no other comment, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you, council. Good discussion. Eric, add that to your list of uh to-dos in your park plan. See if we can come up with something that's gonna be palatable for the entire park system. And meanwhile, Rosco will go dig up all the deed restrictions on all the other parks and figure out what we need to make sure that we, we know is there or not there. So, okay, council, that's uh no new business yet this evening, or do we have any unfinished business? Uh this is the time for citizen public comment. If anybody'd like to address council this evening, please raise your virtual hand or star nine by way of phone. And you'll be recognized to address council. Seeing no one, Stephanie, do you see anyone this evening?
I do not.
All right, very good. We'll move on to staff and council announcements. If there's any staff members that have any announcements this evening. If you please raise your hand, I will find you. There it is, Mr. Slade?
Thank you, mayor. So just a quick update. So we opened bids for our South Thirty-Eighth uh Van Geeson uh Signal Project. And uh was very pleased. I was thinking uh with the delay and COVID issues with manufacturing. That we were gonna see astronomical uh bids. Uh we actually saw a good bid.
Uh, we actually saw good bids, and so you'll see that coming to council on April twentieth to award. Um, it will, we just did a budget amendment tonight. I kinda held off with Aaron on this project. Uh, it's gonna need forty thousand dollars though to complete it. So right now it's uh uh Benton County RCCF funds uh through the county. I think it's five hundred thousand, and we're gonna be looking, asking for a forty thousand dollar out of our three fifty-five, which is funds we collect from new development as transportation impact fees to fund this project and award it and move forward. Um, it's a project that I personally have, this is the third time it's been funded in my twenty-plus-year career. So uh, very happy to be moving forward and getting that signal at that intersection. Um. Unfortunately, you're gonna see some work with the overhead powers and fixing ADA ramps and curb and some crop underground crossing. Uh, then you're gonna see a delay. There's gonna be quite a delay on some of the key components with the, with the signal to just uh, the manufacturing is not there. And so that'll be a wait to get that. But we're still very hopeful we'll have that signal operational before the end of the year, and that'll make it much easier for people to take a left or to get across the intersection, not only for vehicles, but pedestrians. They'll have some protected crosswalks rather than just relying on a flashing well, yellow light, which was, I guess, better than nothing. But look for that on the next council meeting on the twentieth. And then uh, the last thing was, is the utility committee will be meeting uh next Tuesday, uh, April thirteenth. Uh, it's just a general update on everything that's going on in public work. So I haven't done this in a while with the utility committee. It's just gonna be a general discussion on projects, programs, uh, what we got with new development going on on the public work side and then maintenance. So we'll be doing that uh next Tuesday with the utility committee. That was it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Roscoe. Any other staff members? Seeing none. Uh, council, uh, Councilman Bloom?
Um, I just wanted to uh mention that yesterday I went out and watched the drone from mosquito control uh apply uh uh, the pellets that, that we keep the mosquitoes from uh coming to fruition over across the river from us. Uh, actually, it was a borrowed drone. It was Franklin County's drone, but we will, our drone will be in this week. So um, it's a very large drone and, but it's pretty quiet. Um. And uh, you know, we should be seeing a little bit more uh uh, use of it, especially along the river. Um, you know, and probably some areas uh but uh, it, it's kinda neat. I saw one three years ago and for three years been trying to get one out there because it beats them beaten through the brush with their little sprayers and whatever else. Um. Ben Franklin Transit has a meeting this week. Uh, we are uh actively uh providing rides with all the vehicles that we can muster for people to get their vaccinations. Uh, but again, uh although we've gotten uh complaints, uh, we, we can't support the drive-through uh vaccination site because we're not a drive-through service. Uh, we're a delivery service, so uh we support the uh brick and mortar vaccination sites.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. Uh, first, I'm really excited about this Saturday because I get to have my second shot of Moderna down at the Walla Walla VA. So it'll be a nice little trip down to Walla Walla. But I want to remind everyone that uses the VA health benefits that all ages now are able to call up to the Richland VA and request to get their uh vaccination. There was a recent change. Uh, I believe the bill was called Save Lives that the president has signed recently, and that was for the caretakers as well as the spouses of veterans. They're still in the works and trying to get that fixed, but it should be soon. There are other places though to get vaccinated, whether it's the fairgrounds or other locations where you can actually get scheduled for a non-drive-through place to get your vaccine. So I encourage everybody to please, now that it has been opened or will be opened very shortly, I think, to everyone, please make sure to get your vaccine. Let's make sure we're doing our part so that we can get herd immunity. Um, I also want to thank Mr. Bloom for mentioning mosquito control, and I want to thank also the mosquito control for using the pellets rather than the uh spray because as I'm starting to learn in the course that I'm taking now called Heroes to Hives, where I'm learning on how to become a beekeeper through the VA providing this. Um, bees are not doing well when they have areas that are sprayed for mosquitoes. It affects all of the flying things, including the bees. So I'm really glad that we're using pellets for that.
Well, actually, we, the pellets are only for the larva side. We do spray and foggy, but it's done in the evenings after the bees return to their hives. And have uh, uh, basically areas that are um, in proximity that are not sprayed. And we actually go out and apply a barrier around them to keep the bees out. So we provide pretty pretty broad level of services.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. And I know that we, I believe we've recently changed our code so that if someone has a beehive that they have to have some sort of certificate, uh, I, I believe. Is that correct? Eric, do you remember?
That's one of my complaints. I don't think we should.
But at least the good thing is that if they do have that, then the mosquito control would perhaps know, okay, here's, no, that's not how that works.
We have to tell them.
Never mind then. All right. Um.
Thank you.
Fair enough. And oh, there was one other thing I was going to mention, but that's okay. Anyway. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Brown?
Okay, um, I think there was three of us that were at the lobby. Can you hear me? At the legislative lobby last week. Um, it, it brought up some things, um, again with the homeless, the twelve twenty that's coming through, which I do think will come through. Um. So there was that, um. The transportation updates, um. It looks like, Erin, we need to pay their bill, I guess. We were called out on not having our bill paid. Um, and then I know Kate had brought up twice about having a discussion about the change of government. I had not realized that we really needed to have a more formal vote to be able to have that discussion. Um, so I, I wanted to say something. I know about eight years ago, we had talked about this and bringing it forward. The city's growing. Um, I think some of the things that we were saying before have changed. Um, I, I, I think it's worth a discussion. It, it would a- as we're just kind of exploding here, it might give some uh, longer stability and history as people come and go, some of that gets lost. So I, I, I just want to support her in a discussion. Um, this is election year, so if we were gonna do something, this would probably be the year to do it. So that's my two cents for it.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. You know, on, on some of what Kate was saying, so the president said, was saying yesterday that as of May first, he wants all adults be eligible for the vaccine. Just want to remind everybody that as of April fifteenth, all Washington citizens age sixteen or older are eligible to get their shots. Uh, also, thank you, uh, Chief Magetic, uh, those posts on Facebook about as the construction goes on the police station. That's exactly what I mentioned. We all met, but we didn't really meet when you, uh, Ross and I did our phone call about the pre-planning for the police station. That's one of the things I said I want to see was uh, regular updates to citizens as to the project, progress of the construction. So thank you for that. Uh, and, and that's, that's it. So I got, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smart?
Uh, yeah, I just had a couple of quick notes. Um. Roscoe, if on our upcoming meeting for utilities, if we could talk about um traffic signals and the sensors that go with them, I'd appreciate that. So I just want to make sure that we have some of the smartest traffic signals in the state operating in our city. Uh, just want to emphasize that point. And uh, also I did want to bring up that it is campaign, campaign season is coming up, and we did have a lot of discussion about sign ordinances in the past, and I don't believe that any of them actually came to fruition, if I'm not mistaken. So what I would like is just to maybe just, maybe at first, I don't know who, um, to maybe be prepared to give a, um, just a summary of what the current sign regulations allow. I'm not proposing we try to push something through at the last minute. I don't think that would be a good idea. Um. Especially like, you know, in a couple of weeks, people will start making plans. So um, I think that that um that we should just review that and make sure that it's in a recent public record. And then maybe look at our ordinance and just make sure there aren't any really glaring terrible errors that, that might need to be fixed be- between now and you know, November. So and then as far as the conversation about um, the change in government form, uh, that, I, I would, I would um also be happy to participate in that discussion. I, I don't have a particular opinion one way or the other. Um, I, we've had that discussion in the past. Um. I, it's just something that we need to consider as a city as we grow. So I would support, you know, I would entertain that conversation or workshop if that's what it is. Uh, but I don't, I don't see a huge rush for that. I, there's probably plenty of other huge priorities that we need to address, but I don't want that to be lost. So um, those are my comments for the evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gail, is your hand still up? Is that a new one? Okay. Kate, you, do you remember what you were trying to remember?
I did. I, I do remember what I was going to say. Uh, I, I wanted to mention that I did have somebody recently uh contact me that lives up in the Brotherhood area and just like the nineteen eighty-five song, he wants me to make sure that we don't forget about them. Uh, so I guess I kind of, I appreciate you, Gail, mentioning uh, Councilmember Brown, you mentioning me talking about the the governmental styles, and I will actually bring up something that you had mentioned before, how the north part of Van Gisens, we want to make sure that when we're making all of our changes and we're bringing West Richland into the future with all of the good things that we can provide, I want to make sure that we are still remembering those that are north of Van Gisens that still live within West Richland uh as much as possible because uh the person that I was speaking with was very much feeling like they had kind of been left in the dust for a lot of the newer developments. And I want to make sure that they understand that we, we value every single part of our city and all of our folks that are living here. So hopefully we can make sure that we can continue to work towards good things for everybody. Not just the new fancy places. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Gail, just a quick follow-up on uh twelve twenty. The uh, it's placed on a second reading by Rules Committee uh, April sixth, but back in April second. Uh, the majority and do not pass with amendments, uh, minority do not pass, minority without recommendations. Uh, sections three and four are real, real sticklers for uh the opposition on this particular bill. Uh, and the individuals, the minority report was uh Senators Wilson, Ranking Member Brown, Assistant Ranking Member, uh, Operating Braun, uh, Conway, there's uh Warnick. So there's a lot of, lot of support as far as to try to make some changes. AWSC feels there's a there's some good language in that, and then also there's some very poor language. And hopefully uh, if we've got a little push, we can make the amendments to the sections that are of concern. So just to, just for your update, April sixth, it was placed on a second reading by the Rules Committee. Uh, a lot of good information on it. I was looking at today. So uh, the COVID update, things are doing, doing well out at the uh Mass Back site. Uh, we have available to us here in the very near future uh, a round of uh Johnson and Johnson. Uh, they're trying to figure out how they can run two different uh, two different lines. That's gonna be a little bit challenging. Make sure we're getting the right needle in the right arm. But they want to see if that'll uh stir some more interest in people being vaccinated, but though they have to go through the line once, which is a good thing. Uh, the rate, case rates are, are doing quite well, both for Benton County and Franklin County is there too now. Uh, so if things continue to follow the same path in which they are following uh, when the governor makes his announcement uh mid next week, we should be in pretty good shape here. So keep doing what got us here. Uh, and uh, everybody have a safe uh, rest of the spring break. Eric, uh, safe travels to you. Bronson's off uh traveling with family as well. And uh Mayor Pro Tem Brink, you fly safe. Make sure you wear that sunscreen. Eric didn't do that this week and his sunburned. And uh so from Florida to Utah to wherever Bronson might be, everybody enjoy the rest of the week and stay safe. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. At eight oh five.